I'd like to leave this to the class, United States of America. And choose one other which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Hello everybody, welcome to monthly planning board meeting for regular meetings. Tuesday at 5:00. We have a phone, well, we don't have Neil Slumkin here with us, but everyone else is here. We do. I mean, it's wonderful. Neil Slumkin's with us remotely. And we have Ron Reed, and we have Kate Austin, and Nat Brown, Larry Breen, myself, John Shaka, Doris, and Kathy, and Liz Beck. So, we don't have a lot of engagement, but let's see if we can get a few folks to hang a look at them. I know you have. Excellent. Good second. Good, how was it there? Wonderful, thank you. So we have a discussion tonight. Two of them. The first, on this discussion. So it's not a formal, it's not formal hearing. What's the second? I haven't seen what's going in front of us till tonight. A few because they performed yesterday. So number one is pre-submission by the board application of HREA three Madison Street. If you'd like to come up to the voting.
Sure.
Yeah, introduce yourself. Tell us where you are. So forth.
Okay, good evening, sharing numbers of four, everybody. Brian Matthews, Matthews, Kristen Cleary, 241 Panyo Road, East Hampton, New York. Here for applicant for property owner HREA three Madison LLC. I also have my colleague Alex Holley here from floor engineering. Probably much smarter than I could probably answer a lot more questions than you, but than I, for me than I can. But I appreciate the opportunity for this, you know, this process that we're getting from here. Obviously, it's a work in progress and any kind of feedback is always good. And so, you know, just at the outset, we understand that this project's going to require probably additional, at least as proposed right now, additional relief with respect to parking size of the apartment. I think the landscaping number was, is still on the preliminary plan, just under what's be, what would be required if there's no one else do that. But I think what, you know, what we're hoping to get from the board. Kathy and Kathy's, you know, get an idea about, again, a macro level, about planning concepts. About what we'd like to do here, because we think it is, you know, there's already been a lot of renovations, et cetera. It's a, a street front property, free Madison property, I'm sure it's what I seen. So this is really designed to address, you know, the building in the back that everybody here knows much better than I is been dis-repaired, to put it politely, and in desperate need of upkeep. And part of the thing we're looking to do here is not only to make it, you know, functional, but to also a- address what is overriding concern for all of us out here in the east end, you know, try to find additional apartment and try to additional housing wherever you can, wherever you think it makes sense. And that's what we tried to do here as well with this second sort of apartment. I know the limitations on accessory buildings, what have you, but we thought if the location is appropriate, the use is appropriate, and probably coming even more so. So we wanted to get some feedback on that as well. So that's really what I have at the moment. I don't want to say anything before we hear from the board for anybody, but if there's any questions, I'm, I wasn't happy to see my best answer.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Alex, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I stepped away, I wasn't.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, please, please.
Alex Holley, professional engineer with the floor engineering. On speaking on behalf of the applicant, our counsel has provided good introductory remarks. I would just tack on and say that the site is in the sewer district. We've been in contact with the superintendent about a future connection that would come in on Madison Street. There is water in the back along Church Street, which would be advantageous for us given where we are placing our proposed building. We have four proposed parking spaces, five with the ADA spot. And other than the other specifics that are presented in the site plan, that's sort of my introductory remarks. For those who have any specific questions.
I think I saw an email from the building inspector, is that right? Was it, did you back, back contact with the building inspector?
With the, yes, the, the gentleman who would be contacted about the Stantr's sewer in Madison Street. The building inspector, I'm unaware of.
Okay.
We did get a limited response back from.
That, that, I saw that email. Okay, so you've been, you've been talking to them as well?
Correct.
Okay.
We've been contacting, you know, about the interiors, we've been contacting the building for some time as well.
Okay. Hey, my dear on the board, Ron, Steve, it's new for us as well.
Oh, so we have the building next to. Adjacent on lot six.
I'm sure of the initial push for the purchase. I think they had the idea of doing something in the back as you moved to. But I've seen those plans from the foil.
Yeah, right.
I'm sure, you know, what our client's initial push was.
There was no real nexus there, it was just kind of, you know, let's see what we can do here. Let's pull, you know, let's pull everything and see what's been approved, what's been proposed, and that, that was, that's really the only connection there.
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah, that's why I don't, I don't believe this being.
You come up to him, oh, you.
Yes, sorry, yes.
Maybe he was.
Sorry, sorry. Yeah, I don't believe this being. I think, I think technically we may, I mean, the, the building's going to go, post go. In essentially the footprint that it is right now, which is, I don't believe meets, meets setbacks. But if, you know, if, if we do require those, then.
Okay. So just, I mean, I'm serious, potential issue, because it's, it says already, you're stuck by question about expansion of the current site.
No, the footprint is not.
No, it's not, the footprint's not getting marked.
The, so one of the variances for us, a yard setback we have is on the side yard. We basically have it marrying close to the property line. But I would say that the existing structure is, we have our survey listing at point five, so providing ours, the existing conditions is already right next to the property line. So this would not be a next, a large extra ask to be along the property line.
Just a feedback.
Right.
It seems to me like that we might need to just scale that, what you're asking for.
Okay.
The lot coverage does something that's.
Right, just, yeah, I mean, so we're, we're just under, I, I think coverage would be fine. I think coverage as proposed would be fine, the landscaping number is just under what would, as proposed right now for our discussion, is under what the code would require. I'll be uncertain, and Liz and I could talk, if we would need, you know, to, the, putting, putting the height aside, it's just the footprint of the building. I'm not quite sure that we would need variances to reconstruct that footprint in the same location. Or we can have that discussion.
And then I think the other thing. It's a little bit of a issue. I'm just saying.
Gotcha, yeah, no, let's do it.
Adding apartment space for the village.
Yeah.
When the yelling is new late, you can change that at any time.
Going to.
Not be subject to like a conditional approval or?
Well, I mean, I think it, it depends on the changes you're making, but it's permitted use on second story, I think. So while an office is permitted in second story.
There might be ways, there's a number of ways to, to, to make sure that wouldn't be the case and to address that concern. Would a building permit for interior fit out be required, a change of use?
It might, yeah.
Which they would exempt here. Um, I, I have to talk to them. And obviously, like, you can, you can covenant, you can do whichever, there's lots of different ways to. If, if that was the road to go down, that's, that would be a way to do that.
Right.
All right, I have another question. So the, the one story, something maybe to talk about. Another one asked.
Yes.
Yep. Is there, is there any plans? No, no. I only know this because I just, it's one of the histories.
Yeah. We're, yeah, probably a little too much. Yeah, I probably didn't, I hope it's reading it as much as you're reading it actually.
The reason that it's there is because there were, there were plans made probably in the late two thousands or something. To build that out.
Right, and I thought.
That's why that's not funny.
Yeah, I think I, I did see that and, you know, to tunnel underneath or something, it was, there was a lot going on there certainly. But as, I mean, I, I know of no plan.
I think, I think for us and building inspectors should look at, because my understanding is that where it was, it was.
Okay. For the front building, you mean, the, the main building?
Okay, no, for the whole thing.
Okay.
Because you had a, you had a building in the back, you wanted to build over where you're talking.
Okay.
Yeah. But the same type of thing, maybe look at.
Sure.
I agree, there's like one thing to things here, like you can probably.
Okay.
Okay. The last question, but I'm confused by that, that other part of that building. Foundation of the deck on it.
This thing was built down around the 90s, probably. Okay, I don't know what the time period was. They built down this, this back downstairs. So if you go into the shop, the store, it's on the main floor.
Yeah.
You can walk all the way back to the end of that.
Can you, can you? You can go through the, and just, they currently was now our owners for about a year or so. You can go in through the front store and, yeah, kind of go out and over there, through, up to the deck there, yeah.
Retail was all the way back to that.
Yeah.
It's probably a large retail stores.
It's a, it's a, it's a decent sized space.
And is it all super great?
Um, yeah, in the, in the back it is, I guess there's a change, yeah, kind of, a big way through the building there, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
I mean, exactly, the, the. It's a long story, but at some point they built this. And then had plans to, to extend the entire building to front out. So I'm just curious, like, that's, you guys have, you know, in back of your minds, going through, right, well, because I, you know, purchased the property, purchased dollars, purchased property, I noticed seeing those, those plans, so. So I'm just curious, like, that, there was any interest in moving forward with that?
Not that I'm, not that I'm aware of.
I'll show something.
I was gonna be helpless to, like, point to things.
Yeah.
So nothing in particular, but as discussion progresses, I have this available. So this is the site plan.
Yeah.
I also have a general rendering of, just to colorize, to provide color. And then I also have a survey that we can sort of look at, so I, I guess I flip through here a little bit. This is an aerial with a rendering, so Madison Street is on the top part of the page, Church Street's below. The existing structure, this area here is that one-story raised basement that Mr. Reed has been mentioning. Here is the parking provided and the new proposed structure that's along Church Street, to give you some sculpting clarity, some colorizations.
And that, when you. That basement thing is kind of, it's not part of the, it's covered, right?
I'm sorry, yes. It's a deck over it for.
Got it.
Or that's the, the second story apartment.
You know, I'm, I'm thanks, Kathy, and let's concede that. You want to pull that back or anchor it and do something? I know it's, you're trying to do your best here, thank you.
You see it now?
We have.
Shed that's next to it.
Because there's more building on that property than they're showing.
Correct, so this is the existing surveys, this is a, a survey representation of the existing conditions. This is the fronting structure, the basement that's being referenced. This is the ten shed that was just referenced, and this is the back wood shop, wood shop area here, that will be demoed. Both of these will be demoed, the proposed structure is essentially going in kind with this, but the less footprint.
Retail on the ground floor?
Retail on the ground floor, yeah, right.
And are there retail spaces on that street, so we know? Church Street.
On Church Street?
Yeah. This would be the first, be the first one, right?
So another thing to consider, because I think office, the practice here, very, very similar to retail.
What, what's the present function of that basement? And where is it? I, it's just calling it a basement, is that just below the ground?
Yeah, there's a, there's a foundation there, but and the, and the, what you will see, when you can see from the aerial and you're there, it's, it's a, it's a large deck that's used, you know, for, there's second and third, so there's apartments in that front building, and it's really just. Yeah, it's a deck, yeah, there's not much, there's not much to it.
At the back of the property, it probably comes out with ground, maybe three feet.
Yeah.
And then it's a deck, and that's the, the main living floor, which would be the second floor off of Madison.
Yeah, yeah, if you were, if you were to enter this, the retail structure for the first floor, you could walk straight across. Because it is a three-story building from the street. As you go to the back, it presents itself as a two-story, because of the grade change. So this is almost one continued structure, I think there's a few steps internal, but this basement is utilized as an extension of the retail, the first floor.
I just have another question up the back building, the proposed building. So you're going to demolish that, take everything out? So are you going to build up any existing foundations?
Uh, that's, that's probably an engineering question, but I, my assumption is that it's all going to go. Yeah, yeah, that, that's a. It's wood, wood shop.
Does it even have a foundation?
It might, if so, be not substantial enough to, to carry the load in the structure.
I have a look at the origins of that too, so I don't know, I thought some of this previous condition origins was, we had to have some.
Keep the.
The previous building.
Yeah, keep it, hard it up to those off of the age.
So that can be saved for, for non-conforming, like a place three wall type?
To maintain, to continue the pre-existing methodology.
You would lose your non-conforming structure if it came down?
That's the question that's asked.
That's.
Yeah. Well, we can do that, we can do that a lot, and you send it something, it's a common question, as you, as you'd expect.
I'm just curious on this structure, just because.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know the answer offhand, yeah. We could ask our architectures for that further.
Because you've got that multiple term but for, to elaborate on parking a little bit, present, there's some parking spaces there.
There are, in essence, I. There is.
On your parking spaces, right?
It's a gravel lot, that can't be parked in.
Okay.
Um, I think that, off the top of my head, that the prior CO says that there are three spaces. And the way they calculated that was the area divided by the square footage of it to the parking space, which is like 10 by 20.
Okay.
So it is not, it is not striped traditionally like a.
Right, right. Yeah, okay.
Proposal, it's one space.
Memory search.
Variance is one space.
Correct.
That's what.
Yeah.
So we don't know, we have, we haven't looked at it, so no.
Got it. That's, I believe that's, that's what we came up with, is, is one space. Or we were providing, just I'd seen there. Right.
Well, I assume that, that would go through the, the building inspector, he, he, I'm sure had a comment on.
I'm quite sure, yeah, I think they understand it's going to be.
Right.
Multifaceted product.
Right, right. All right, any more questions or comments for these guys?
I think my one would be that if you had another apartment up there, I'd like to try to. Air on the side of some kind of a.
Okay. It's fair.
Hey, can I add something?
Please.
So a couple of things, I noticed that there's no sidewalk proposed here. And there is sidewalk more yourself up here on Church Street. Further, I'm not sure that that would be something that we want to see, but if you're going to have retail use there, sort of makes sense.
Definitely. It's, it kind of stops, oh, I'm kind of, that's crazy, yeah, you see, yeah, it kind of stops here at the, the property to the, property to the south, plus I can't, it's hard to tell if it's actually there, but we can, we can certainly take a look at that.
That's important, I was like, yeah. Yeah.
The other thing is, uh, the, the driveway access ingress and ingress room needs to be wider, so under, under the.
Okay.
And I think just because, you know, this is. Uh, there's a lot of things going on here, I would suggest that the board consider asking for a full environmental assessment form rather than the short VAF in this case, so. Can fully evaluate the environmental facts.
Yeah.
There were a couple errors I noticed between the plans, the ADA spaces in, in different places. We would want to have it closer to what you showed on the folder plan.
Oh, I, yeah, his site was, yes, yeah.
You have that you are proposing 26 parking stalls, so in your blue table there, so that should be corrected. And that the side yard minimum is six feet and it's five. We're starting to do that, a little bit drainage and all the details.
Sure, sure.
Um, in my mind, if you're going to take the building down, you should try to get a conformal structure in there. Basically taking the building down, so. Try to get my side as first, so you're directed to this building.
Yes, we should be able to.
Twenty, twenty-four, I believe, is.
We should be able to get a conformal structure in there and have, and have a wider access. So the width is 35 feet, so that would be, is the, what width are you looking for, 24?
I believe it's 24, but you need, or you're res, rescrapping.
Okay.
Um, so, I mean, yeah, I mean, I'm not creating this hardship, so.
Just looking, just looking, yeah, no, no.
Looking at, maybe that, the various.
Yeah, understood.
Yeah. What is, oh, yeah, it's possible. I mentioned grade two, are, they're all in front, right?
Yeah, it's one of those, you know, you know, three stories in the front, visually two stories in the back.
Right.
Kind of goes up pretty dramatically, you get midway through the building here.
Right.
It's pretty flat in the back. Yeah, yes, there is an eight inch sewer main in Madison slash Main Street. Three shops internally, or initially to the, um, to the superintendent. He, we needed a formal application to check capacity, but given the, we need to catch one.
There's a difference, go, go, that way.
Yeah. Yes, we would make a second spur across in this, this open area here.
Right, okay.
One more thing, I notice there's no loading space.
Okay. For the full left truck loading space.
So I need you to be on residential.
Okay.
So, I'm hearing this, that there's a group of conflicting issues here. The width of the, the entry driveway, if you tear the entire building down, that it's no longer pre-existing, non-conforming, but you need to conform to present zoning code. And there's several things that they're all kind of making this thing smaller and smaller, right, for, for us, apparently. It's just a general kind of conflict.
Okay, any more, any more comments?
Yeah, I think next time, the board, it'd be nice to have some photos.
Okay.
I mean, I know this is properly instantly.
Sure.
Kathy, are there, are there, are there, are there, are there?
Yeah, for any non, any non-residential, it's required. And this board can wait.
Yeah.
That requires.
All right.
Well, thank you.
Well, thank you for coming in. Come back again, have more questions or, or reach out to us.
All right, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Very much, yeah.
Okay, let's move on to another discussion today. Number two, pre-submission. Upfield Sharks at the Main Street. So we have Will Sharp here.
Reading.
Will Sharp, Paul Wilson, please. Panyo Architect. The owner, Rose, she's changed. So, Main Street, so you have the photos and the schematics and answers, et cetera. And we're here to talk about this project. We haven't developed anything on the tech side. We're just looking at. Requirements, that's just what it's. So the lot is about 26,000 square feet. The existing footprint of the bank is about 2,900 square feet. On the first floor, and I think you all have that, there's simple drawings with the red. So the first floor, the proposed increase is to 1,800 square feet. So essentially, the existing footprint is 13 square, 13% of the overall lot. We're asking for something in the vicinity of 32%. The existing parking is about 22 units. We're proposing to keep 22 unit, 22 parking places. And by closing the driveway to the south, we would probably add another addition, two units, two parking places on Main Street. So you, so a, a lot of this was inspired by the shape, by the, the building that was there. The 19th century, there were two hotels, there was the Nassau, I think it was, and then. The nineteen seventy, there were two hotels, there was the Nassau, I think it was, and then, uh, the. Afterwards, uh, and it looks to be a freestanding building, three stories. There was a hotel with a tea room, et cetera. So far, I have not been able to find anything about what happened to this building. Uh, I think the bank was built roughly in nineteen seventy, late sixties. The building department couldn't find any, any drawings prior to that. So I suspect a lot was vacant for like some time, but we don't really know. But now you have an, an image which somebody just posted somewhere here on the outside of what was there. So, essentially, we're asking to increase first, uh, floor to add retail. The second floor has six existing office spaces, and if we increase that, just bring that volume up. Then we would have room for more office spaces, so there's six now, maybe even an additional five office spaces. But we were just looking at the massing to go up, we would have to introduce, uh, obviously, another egress staircase and an elevator to get. To the proposed third floor, and the proposed third floor would be apartments. It's six thousand nine hundred square feet, a lot of space. The owner has said that she would be willing to entertain the idea of some affordable apartments and then some probably market apartments. And the massing would not, it would not go above thirty-four feet, it would essentially look like the American Hotel. With some modernist interventions. But that's, that's conceptually what it is, and it's not attached to, uh, either provisions to the south or send to the right. This, this is an issue really about parking, because we all know we need more retail, we need more office, and we need housing. So, how we go about this discussion is up to you guys, and I've been talking to a lot of my colleagues about. Little towns in America, and they're not requiring any parking. Structure in downtown area, and it seems counterintuitive, but what it's doing is really forcing the issue of parking. And I was talking to somebody today about, uh, our little electric jetties, which really don't get used. One of the reasons that will get used is because we don't enforce any real alternative parking. One of the visions that some of us have is, uh, what could happen at Haven's Beach? That could be a parking lot, but become a loop jetty, like they do at Woods Hall, you go to Woods Hall, which I did this summer with my family. They say, don't, you can park here, but please don't park in the Walmart, give them the jetty for free, take the loop. And then come into, um, this beautiful, incredible walking area, full of cars, by the way. But the wise person takes the jetty, so. You know, we could talk about, um, the number of parking places that would be required to put in housing. Wired for office space, like I said, we have about twenty-two spaces here now. This project won't get built, couldn't get built, because we have to follow the, uh, all of the parking requirements. So I, I'm trying to entertain the idea of looking at alternatives and what those might be. Uh, I've been reading, uh, about what planning has been doing of recent across the country. And I just hope that as we. Look for this opportunity, look at things that are not particularly in the code right now. I, I have numbers here about what would be required if we were to build out just the office spaces. And I think that office space, if we built out. Sixty-nine hundred square feet and we divided that by two hundred, we would need something like thirty spaces, the parking ain't gonna happen. So there, there is five dedicated, uh, parking spaces on the site right now for. The office spaces. I don't, I sit there and drink my coffee and look at the cars and how the cars and how that site's being used, and there's a drive-in window. Tenant wants to keep the drive-in window, drive-in windows were first introduced, I thought they were a very contemporary thing. Apparently, they were introduced to banking in nineteen twenty-eight, who knew? They like it, it works, most people that use the bank park on the street, go into the bank. Most people who park on the site go to send or elsewhere. During the week, on the weekend, nobody's using the bank, and so it's an overflow for the village, and. This is Ching hasn't done anything to rope it off, et cetera, but, um, there's. That to consider, so, you know, where this goes, I don't really know, and I'm, I'm talking to a lot of colleagues, I can say it elsewhere. Who are doing downtown renovation projects, downtown new construction, renovation, housing projects, no parking. Now, this is a small project, it's not something that's proposed elsewhere in the village, it has. Very different scale issue. So, um, open for discussion. Yes. And again, it's, you know, that's, uh, a number that seems scale appropriate, um, it's not gonna be thirty.
Right.
Uh, I don't know what it is, it's of the, uh. Hardware store, they have five studio apartments, so exceptionally, we could do two, um. Affordable studio units and then new market units, I think that's all fungible. It doesn't obviously have to take up the entire sixty-nine hundred square feet, it could be deck area, it could be, um, some kind of massing that. Was a ziggurat of sorts in the back, so it wasn't a complete block.
Yeah.
The, it's actually worrying about the parking. The, the logistics and this whole waterfront overlay. Kathy's involved in that, um, there wasn't an appetite for changing the current. Like, like, the current structure for the village, there was no appetite to change that. And that was, would have been like the appropriate time to consider that at the moment. Um, so for now, we have, these, all these rules are in place, and that's what we have to follow as a board.
I understand. Other people, and I have a different opinion, I, I favor housing, uh, at the shipyard, boatyard. For workers, and we're shot down for that.
No, I was trying to current.
Yeah, but the appetite, the appetite depends on who you speak with, and I don't disagree with you, and I don't disagree that it's a very, um. Difficult lift, difficult ass. So in the process of variances, uh, certainly, um, committee, I'm familiar with, there are extenuating circumstances. So there's always a practicable alternative, et cetera, if, if in fact that's a, um, a possibility.
But the other thing is, the reality too, is that some of these things are a place to limit development. So, that's following, someone following that theory.
So, and I get that, um, and the, and the problem with, uh, part of the overlay was that it seemed like it was shooting itself in the foot. For some of these particularly, um, car-driven solutions. And I think that that's a discussion that I hope the village can. Look at, I mean, with some of the projects that are going on.
Yeah.
If, if the car controls what, um, is to be built, we are not gonna get more affordable housing.
Well, I think, I think there's like a balance here, I think there's an indication that there's a direction we're not just going to take. And so it's, it's, we have a really good project. Yeah, we will, and to see how that affects, uh, parking areas, since they're rental. But at the same time, regardless of that, there is, there is. There, there is a code that we have to follow, and we're just giving feedback as far as plans, because I understand. Draw, like, architectural plans are expensive. And then, you know, if we're following the code, even if we're on the cutting edge of that, this looks potentially like. It's a, it's a really big ask for square footage. That's just my.
I take a little bit different brush to this, because we are sitting on a planning board. We have certain orders that's going to fall, but if I'm thinking about it in terms of planning perspective. And the way the village is, I can see really potentially admitting that the, the Main Street. Together, and not having this one building sits back and get the, get the village to be more. But it's, it's great, and I, I, I like the idea of it, I know there's, there's obstacles. It seems like a, a nice proposal that I absolutely like this, to help build and create our street wall.
Well, we could, yes, we could bring it up to the sidewalk, and we'd extend it to the. And part of that, uh. And part of that is driven by the fact that the current tenant, instead of being for quite some time, uh, really requires the drive-in. So if we were to connect the building to send, which conceptually would be nice, uh, we would be. Eliminating the use of the bank, with its primary uses, which is the drive-in. And if you look at the building historically, it was never connected to either the north or the south, it was a freestanding building. And it was at the sidewalk, and it had a garden at the back. So. So in the, so. Help me out here, um, there's, uh, there are variances and then there are, you know, absurd asks. But, um, if we're trying to, um. Get towards, uh, a viable village by having housing and retail and office spaces. How do, how do we, uh, do that, and in this case, this is a bank building. It has more, a commercial building, has more parking spaces, I would venture to say than any other site on Main Street. And in that regard, and it has worked as a, uh, spillover for other retail spaces. Because it's not police.
Let's ask your question, I'll leave a question.
Yeah.
Are there incentives?
Yeah, so there's the Long Island Workforce Housing Act.
Okay.
We still have in our code, um, which is, uh, ten percent density bonus, uh, for set aside of affordable housing. If you're doing over five units, it applies, so if you're proposing six, it would apply. And that's how that works.
Does anything happen, does it affect anything with parking?
No, parking still has.
Just that's the.
Right, right, parking is not addressed in that law at all, so it still has to comply with parking, yeah.
Okay.
That gives you ten percent, that gives you an extra unit.
Oh, square footage?
Yeah, yeah, gives you density, a ten percent density bonus, that's what it gives you.
Yeah, well, in this building.
As long as there's a set aside for affordable housing.
Yeah, in this building, we probably wouldn't need that, just because the, the water is so.
It's mandatory for over, it's based on the number of units that triggers it.
Yeah.
Yeah. I could send you a provision.
So I, I'm aware of that.
Yeah.
Uh, I was just wondering if there was any, uh, issue.
There's no parking provision in that law, or waiver for that.
Would, I guess, uh, Chris, you have two stories, right?
Right.
That is deep roof. I guess people go away, and the third floor be added, is that right?
Look, essentially, if you like the American Hotel.
Yeah, yeah.
Something of that nature, yeah.
Oh, that, like, more or less.
Yes.
That's right. But I, 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 I agree with Ron's outlook, which is like, I like the idea of. Relining building of the street and the sidewalk, which is, you know, original, uh, that doesn't scare me at least. And I, I, I think it's appealing, um, from a certain perspective, um. Uh, I don't know how one resolves parking issues, um, you know, we can be discussing more going forward. You talked about getting creative with alternative ideas, and you mentioned a, a larger surface or something.
I mean, I've just been talking to other people and other communities, how they've been dealing with this, and this is not the first time it's come up here. Look, you know, what happens with the Adam Blatter project if, if there was no environmental issue, you know? We, we need seventy-nine houses, apartment probably not there, but is it gonna be all driven, forget about the environmental thing, by the automobile? And that has been a decision that other communities have made and said, no, the automobile is no longer, is a concept of. Of, of quite some time, of the Robert Moses day.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
And even Jake Jacobs is talking about it, but most contemporary planners will say that, um, we need to look at alternatives. One of the alternatives that we've been trying is this electric jetty, which has not been working. Because there's no incentive, so there's a discussion about how, how do you make an incentive? And, you know, how do I teach my children to do homework? It's the same way when we put a traffic circle in these various places, people said, I don't wanna do that, I need a signal, I need this. We need to force the issue, and let me bring in this European idea of a traffic circle, which is an ethra to everybody. So.
Just circling back, it's not, what you're saying is. This particular project to think of drives.
Yeah, I guess it would be like spot zoning or some, some. Well, we brought the horse to the rodeo to have the discussion.
Yeah.
To use all these, we're metaphors, and we are not cast in any way, uh, I just. Have been looking at solutions my entire adult life, and they're usually not in the box. Not in the box, and that's the challenge, I think, this village has, whether it's this building or not. How do we go forward? And if we don't go forward carefully, we won't have a, a school system, for instance, because nobody will be able to live here, so. Maybe it's, it's, uh, extending the conversation, but it's a cultural conversation that we have to have. And I, I'm sure that at some point we can do this, but, uh, how do we proceed? Do we go, do we take the same stuff to the CBA and say, are we crazy? You know, how, how do we proceed in a conversation, in a workshop way? That maybe this project is an example, because it's an outlier to begin with, it's the end of the, uh, Main Street. It's a standalone building, it has no architectural significance, um, it has more parking lots than. Than any building on the Main Street, so.